The committee on fiscal affairs took order. Before we start, I'd like to have a nice welcome for J.B. Milliken, the new chancellor on day one.[15.04][15.04](APPLAUSE). It's your first committee meeting?
It is, yes.
Well, just thanks very much.
I started the first thing this morning here with the presidents and deans, though, so it's a great day.
All right. Well, welcome.
Thank you.
We all look forward to working with you and for you.
Thanks very much.
Okay. Is it Barry's first meeting, Barry?
It's actually my second, but I'm glad to be back.[43.12][43.12](LAUGHTER). Actually, the first one counted too because of that out-of-session appointment.
Oh, oh, right. Yes, yes, you're right.
But we're now confirmed.
You're right.
The Grover Cleveland of the board of trustees.[58.01][58.01](LAUGHTER).
The first item of business is the approval of the minutes from our last meeting on October 7th. Move it. Item is removed. Any questions, comments? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, then it carries. Item B is a resolution authorize council to execute a contract on behalf of LaGuardia Community College to purchase building maintenance services. The contract shall be awarded to the lowest responsible and responsive bidder after public advertisement is sealed bidding by the college pursuant to law and university regulations. Such purchase shall not exceed a total estimated cost of $3.2 million for the first year of a five-year term, chargeable during fiscal years 14 and 15, and 15 and 16. The contract shall include the right for the university to terminate the contract in its best interest. I move the approval and adoption of action item 1B.
Second.
Item is seconded. Any questions? There being none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. The following is an added item to the agenda. Item 1C is a resolution requesting that the City University of New York adopt an academic excellence fee of $500 per semester for students in the MPA program at the Baruch College School of Public Affairs effective in the fall '14 semester. This fee will permit greater support for career services, more scholarship, and graduate assistance support. It will also support greater academic capacity and overall -- greater academic capacity overall, and as with the current academic excellence fee spending in the School of Public Affairs, the large majority will go to direct student services. I move the approval and adoption of call in item 1C.
Second.
I'm sure we have questions. Any questions, any comments, any explanation about C?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. The last bullet point says, as with current AEF spending and SBA, the large majority will go to direct student services. Can someone embellish upon that what that means?
Sure. We've had academic excellence fees at Baruch College for the last several years in the graduate degree programs, and we've specified that all of the revenues from the academic excellence fees be reinvested back into those programs. Most of them do go to direct student services. Some of them could go for scholarship for students. Most of it goes for additional faculty. The reason we say that most will go to direct student services is because there may be some dollars that go back into the program for maybe administrative costs or for things that would be considered not direct student services. But 100% of the dollars are mandated to go back into those individual programs that the students are paying additional funds for. So this academic excellence fee for the MPA program at the School of Public Affairs would bring us to consistency with the other graduate programs at Baruch College, and specifically the other graduate programs in the School of Public Affairs. Now, the last thing I just want to add is the MPA program at the School of Public Affairs is an outstanding program. It has great student outcomes in terms of employment after graduation, and so we think that to be consistent with the other programs and because of the value that that program brings, that this fee is fair and equitable.
Thank you.
Are there comparable fees for the business school graduate programs?
Yes. The MBA program at Baruch also has this $500 academic excellence fee.
I assume we do these fees because we don't have the ability to differentiate in terms of tuitions at the graduate level, and the fees are more representative of probably what should be inclusive in tuitions, and we have to do it through, quote, "fees." Are we moving more?
That's correct. Trustee Beal raises a terrific point in that state law says that the same tuition rates have to be applied for like degrees. So we would have to charge the same tuition rate for all MPA programs within the university, all MBA programs, all masters of arts programs. Like degrees have to be charged the same tuition. So, yes, this is a way to acknowledge that there is value in certain programs at the university, although the degree offering is the same.
I hope we move one day towards being able to have tuitions reflective of the differentiation. But for now...
That's the way most universities do it.
Any further questions? Motion's on the table. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item of business is their information items, and it's a report on the city's budget.
Okay. Thanks, Chair Lotte, and good afternoon again, everyone. The Mayor de Blasio issued his first executive budget a little less than a month ago, and it called for a substantial investment in the university, so we're really pleased on the budget. There is a presentation document at each of your seats. It's also there electronically for you, and so I'm just going to walk you quickly through the analysis. So on page two, whenever the budget -- executive budget is issued, there are always changes to the current year. As I'm sure most of you know, our current fiscal year will end on June 30th. So for fiscal year '14, the city executive budget did provide additional $1.2 million for energy costs and about $400,000 for increased lease costs. And this is very helpful to us as we're closing out a year to make sure that these mandatory cost increases are covered. It'll help us in terms of making sure that our overall city budget is in balance for fiscal year '14. Again, the big story on the executive budget, of course, is fiscal year '15. The city is recommending operating support of almost $273 million for our community colleges. And the thing that we're most proud of and most pleased about is this $19 million investment in this new STEM support expansion program. And this investment grows to $29 million in fiscal year '16 and $51 million in fiscal year 2017. And I think it's safe to say that there's been no mayor in any executive budget that's been proposed and that anyone here can either recall or find documentation on where there's been a $51 million investment in community. And so we're really, really happy with the trust that the mayor has placed in us and going to do everything we can to make sure that the city gets a good return on its investment. The components of the $19 million are listed on those bullets in the middle of page -- on page two. The very successful accelerated studies in associate degree programs. We are planning to expand that to over 4,000 students next year, and that planned expansion is now fully funded as part of the mayor's executive budget. There's also a piece there to have an ASAP-like program for STEM students in associate degree offerings at both our community colleges and our comprehensive colleges that offer associate degrees. There is a call for STEM research fellowships to help our students who are in STEM disciplines, again, in associate degree programs, have the opportunity to work with scientists and with faculty who are doing research activities, and that's $1.1 million. There's $100,000 for a STEM co-op education program, again, to give those students in STEM programs the opportunity to get some work experience, to provide them with that valuable experience for when they graduate. The next one, summer tuition, we're really excited about. It's something that we had proposed to the city, and all of these items are things that we had proposed, but summer tuition is something that we're really excited about. I think as most of you know, our students who are eligible for financial aid have a challenge when it comes to summer offerings because there is some financial aid that is not available to them in the summer, or if it is, they have to burn up an eligible semester that they may have for just a, you know, three-credit summer offering. And so we want our students to progress towards their degree as quickly as they can. We don't want them to have to use up their financial aid eligibility. And so $3.3 million will now be available for students in the STEM disciplines in associate degree programs to persist and to take courses during the summer, and this $3.3 million will cover their tuition. So again, we're really excited about that. I think that's going to be terrific benefit to our students. And lastly, academic advisement, $7.1 million. This will cover for next year an additional 60 academic advisors at all of our campuses at the community colleges, and again, the comprehensive senior colleges that provide associate degree programs. So that is something that, again, we think our colleges are going to have a good return on that investment. Academic advising is critical. Been part of our budget request for the last several years, so we're really pleased about that investment as well. So overall, a $19 million add for next year that grows to $51 million in 2017. In addition, our community college rental needs of $1.5 million are fully funded for next year. Again, mandatory cost increases may not be as exciting as programmatic increases that we just talked about, but again, they're very important to make sure that we're fully funded for those costs and that we don't have to redirect dollars from campus budgets. The civic justice corps program, which has been successful and has been running at John Jay College for the last several years, is funded again next year. There are some items that are not in the executive budget, and these have historically been city council-funded items that are put into the budget on a one-year basis. They're not baselines, and every year we have to lobby the council to put them back, and those are listed at the bottom of page two. Therefore, our various centers and institutes, Dominican Studies Institute, Center for Puerto Rican Studies at Hunter College, Creative Arts Team, and the Joseph Murphy Center for Worker Edit at School of Professional Studies. Our expectation is that the council will restore those funds for next year, but again, it's part of our lobbying effort with the council towards city adoption. And lastly, at the top of page three, you see the table there for our community colleges for next year. The current year, the total budget, when you look at all funding, state, city, and tuition, is $803 million, and that's growing by $45 million for next year, a 5.6% increase. So terrific news for our community colleges, and we're certainly optimistic that once the city budget is adopted, that this number will grow because the city council is going to make some investments in our colleges as well. So overall, terrific news in terms of the city executive budget, and also very, very encouraging news about the fiscal strength of our community colleges going forward.
Matt, if you look at the -- do I understand that some expansion of ASAP is going to come out of the operating support increase as well as the STEM?
Yes. That's -- most of that $7.4 million will be for the expansion of ASAP. A very small portion of that will be for the STEM program. And that expansion was something that we've planned for the last three years, was that in fall 2014, we'd be at 4,000 students in the ASAP program.
So that's an additional -- how many students in ASAP? 4,000?
This year, I believe we had a little over 3,000, about 3,200. So it's about 800 new students.
Okay. And that's all the students at Guttman are in ASAP. Is that correct?
This doesn't include the Guttman students. However, you raise a really good point in that Guttman Community College, when it was conceived, was tailored after the ASAP program. So a lot of the supports that are there for ASAP students are there for the Guttman students as well. It is a similar model, but the funding for those students is not in the ASAP budget. It's separately funded by the city.
But are all the students at Guttman given the benefit of those ASAP-type supports?
Yes.
Okay. So that -- can you look out to the next two years when this grows to 51 million, and can you foresee what the ASAP growth will look like in those years?
Yes. I don't have the student numbers with me, but the $7.4 million for next year grows to $35 million in fiscal year 2017. So of that $51 million in 2017, $35 million is for ASAP. And that's always been the challenge of the ASAP program. It's always been very successful in terms of the student outcomes, but the concern we always had was, how do you scale this up?
Yeah.
And so the fact that the mayor put the funds in is going to help us plan for that expansion going forward.
So by the time we get to $35 million for this, we should be up to 6,000 or 7,000 students in ASAP, correct?
Without question, yes.
And is the cost per student per year in ASAP about $8,000? Is that what I --
The initial difference when we first started the program was about $6,000 per student more than it was for a traditional community college student. That number we've been able to bring down as we've been growing the program because of scale issues, and also we found ways to be more efficient in terms of how we're administering the program. So that's come down to about $4,000 per student in terms of the discrepancy, and we're hoping that we can continue to bring that gap down.
Well, I don't know if other members of the board feel the same way I do. I wouldn't be surprised if there were some. I'm very interested in if ASAP continues to show dramatically better outcomes in terms of student credit retention and ultimately graduation success. I'm very interested in us trying to figure out how to expand those programs so that they benefit all of our community college students. I mean, it seems to me only right, as a fiduciary matter, if you have some students who are in programs that are twice the success rate or more than twice the success rate, that you try to make that available to all the students. And so I think it's very good news that the mayor has put in this additional ASAP funding. But I think we should be looking for ways to continuously expand that program and bring up, you know, our very low community college success rates, which are down in the low 20s, I think. Bring those up to 50% or better by ASAP. I mean, the way it works is it's less money per completed degree in ASAP per student, but it's because you get such dramatic improvement in the completion rates, it's more money on a yearly basis. Okay, thank you.
Yes. I share your conviction and your desire to get ASAP better funded, more widely funded because of the results that it obtains. Having just gone through a confirmation hearing, I know it was on the lips of several of the senators, our retention rates and certainly our graduation rates. I just have two questions.
Sure.
Maybe it's three. Of these things that the mayor has highlighted here, or you've highlighted from the mayor's budget?
Yes.
Did we ask for all of this?
Yes. We submitted a proposal to the city. Our request was more than this $51 million that ended up being funded, but yes, all of these items were part of a proposal that we had put together and then submitted to the mayor.
And I apologize, most of you, I'm sure know this. The civic justice corps program at John Jay, what is that?
Civic justice corps program is something that was started under Mayor Bloomberg. The mayor had a commission on economic opportunity, CEO, it was called, and they funded various programs throughout the city and here at CUNY, and they provided funds for the civic justice corps. This program is related to folks who are incarcerated and are coming out of incarceration to help them not only with academic supports in getting back into a college-type atmosphere or getting into a college-type atmosphere, but also with vocational supports in terms of finding jobs and things like that. So it's been a terrific program at John Jay, and we're really pleased to see that support will continue for next year.
I was hoping you would say that. I didn't know what this was. You may have seen this terrific piece in The Times two days ago about the work that a paper professor at John Jay is doing at the Otisville Prison in terms of teaching liberal arts.
Yeah.
And the enthusiasm, the interest of those students happen to be inmates in those programs, and the very high retention and graduation rate that they're having.
Brings down recidivism.
Yes, yes. But that's not the purpose. That's a...
That's a side effect, but a very happy one.
A very happy one. And I was curious as to how much funding, you know, CUNY provides to that program and whether or not we can't begin to do more in other prisons around the state. I know the governor offered some initiative in this regard, didn't play out well this year.
Right, and the university was certainly supportive of the governor's proposal, and so hopefully in future years, we can see some of that. And again, I just want to give tons of credit to John Jay College. You know, President Travis is really one of the leading experts in certainly New York State and in the entire country about this topic and reducing recidivism, and so we certainly support any additional funding.
And maybe you could bring back, just as an information item for the committee, just what the full scope of the CUNY activities in the prisons is.
Sure.
Thank you.
Because I think it goes beyond John Jay.
Well, beyond John Jay, and there's also a lot of private schools, for example, Mercy College.
And Bard.
And Bard, Mercy at the Osmond Institute has an associate degree and a baccalaureate program. So it's, you know, dispersed throughout all of the private and public schools.
Great.
With regard to ASAP, is it at all the community colleges, and how -- do you have a number of -- how many students are at each campus?
Yeah, I don't have the number off the top of my head, but yes, it's at all the community colleges, and actually, I'm glad you brought it up, Trustee Beal, because one thing that I should mention earlier was for next year, ASAP will be at Medgar Evers College for the first time. So that'll be the first senior college of the ASAP program. We're really pleased about that because a majority of students do enter Medgar Evers College as associate degree students, something that President Crewe really lobbied for and thought would be important. So there'll be a cohort of 300 students in addition to the 4,000 community colleges. There'll be 300 students at Medgar Evers College for the initial ASAP program in the fall.
Thank you.
When I travel around the country, I get asked about ASAP more often than I get asked about any other CUNY initiative because everybody is concerned about improving completion rates in the community colleges. It's the biggest waste we have in higher ed. We lose three out of four. And if you can just, you know, if you can double the completion rate, that would be -- have a huge -- there are 40-some percent of the students in public higher ed are in community colleges. And, you know, that's why Gates, Obama, and everybody is so focused on community college success is that it has the lowest-hanging fruit in terms of improving the productivity, you know, of public higher ed. So if we can take the lead on that, we're doing the country a tremendous service by, you know, by providing an example that works.
I have a question.
Sure.
The $15-plus million that's been added to the budget by the mayor, am I right in saying that this is subject to the MOE, so this is a permanent $15 million going out forever? It's not just a one-year?
That's correct.
Great. Okay. Great. We're now going to end -- we're now going into the subcommittee on order. Pass to the panel, over to Peter.
Thank you. We have three action items today and one information item. The first action item is I would like to move the approval of the minutes of the meeting of February 3, 2014.
Shall move.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Passes? Item B is approval of the fiscal year 2014 audit scope and engagement letter. And by the way, Mr. Chairman, I assure you, when you travel around the state, you are unlikely to be asked about this.[1442.63][1442.63](LAUGHTER). In fact, I'd actually do what I did and read it. It's in your materials, and we have our colleagues from KPMG with us, but I would like to move the approval of the audit scope and engagement letter. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Finally, for action items, an approval of the engagement letter for Queens College dorm bond offering agreed-upon procedures for audit work. That is also in your materials. I'd like to move it, and I have a second.
Second.
Any discussion, comments, or questions?
Is KPMG going to do the audit work on that as well?
Yes.
If there are no other questions or comments, I'll call the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Carries. All right, we have one information item, which is our fiscal year 2013 management letter, and I believe that's -- is that KPMG?
Yes.
Okay. With us today, just for the record, is Shelley Massey and one of her colleagues from KPMG, and I believe, Shelley, you'll take the lead.
Okay. Well, getting back up to action items ago, I was going to go through the audit plan. Did everybody have a copy of this?
Yep. Yes, we have it.
Would you like me to, or?
Sure.
Okay, I will make it brief.
I was doing a visible check with my fog.[1541.41][1541.41](LAUGHTER). The enthusiasm is palpable.[1544.83][1544.83](LAUGHTER).
I will pick the highlights.[1549.83][1549.83](LAUGHTER). Okay. Well, thank you, Peter. I'm glad to be back this year.
I brought mine up.
I do want to introduce Jason Speel. He is the new senior manager responsible for your engagement. He is replacing John Usenya, who led our firm back in February. So I am briefly going to just touch upon the highlights, but I would like to spend just a brief few moments on Slide 2, which is our client service team.
Yes, thank you.
There are a couple of new additions this year, and we do have a representative, Benny from Watson Rice. We are going to be incorporating the use of Watson Rice, a subcontracting firm, to assist us during the audit process this year. They are providing a senior associate and an associate who will work underneath KPMG personnel. So our senior will be supervising them, and then Jason, our managers, will be reviewing their work. And our cellie, Bernardo, is the liaison, the client partner for Watson Rice, and we have Benny Hadnot, who is filling in for her today since she was unable to attend. The other point that I wanted to...
May I interrupt?
Yes.
I assume they -- my understanding is that this subcontract is pursuant to state law, designed and intended to secure public procurement engagement for minority-owned businesses?
Mm-hmm.
And I guess my question is, with our engagement letter with you, was specifically contemplated doing this?
Yes, it was part of the RFP to be required.
I just wanted to be clear on that.
Yeah.
Both the engagement letter and the contract is going through the system?
Okay. Thank you.
And then just one other thing that I wanted to highlight. You'll see at the upper left hand, there's a box that says "to be determined." The concurring review partner who performs the quality review, the second partner review, is going to be changing this year. I will be rotating off after the fiscal '15 engagement, and the concurring partner who had been assigned will be taking over as the lead. In order to work the rotation policies at KPMG, she needs to be off the engagement for two years, and we will have somebody replace her as the concurring review partner. Any questions? Okay. Next slide, just an objective of the audit. We've been through this before. Primarily, it is to enable the auditor to express an opinion on the financial statements that they have presented fairly in accordance with US GAAP. The next three slides include the responsibilities of the three groups of individuals that have responsibility for the conduct of the audit. The first is management, who prepares the financial statements, who maintains an internal control environment. The next is the audit committee. Your responsibility is one, generally of oversight of that process and of the audit. And then our responsibilities on Slide 6 is to form and express an opinion on the financial statements, to conduct the audit in accordance with professional standards, which for this organization is auditing standards that are generally accepted in the United States and standards applicable to financial audits contained in government auditing standards. And government auditing standards are relevant here because we do also issue an opinion on your federal awards, which is primarily SFA. Moving on to Slides 7 and 8 includes KPMG's audit approach and methodology. Nothing here has changed from the prior year. Just one thing that I would like to point out with our engagement team is we do incorporate a lot of specialists. We utilize a team that helps us with some DASNY work, but everything does roll up underneath Jason and I, so in terms of management, they do see one engagement team.
Shelley, I should have asked you this before, but your successor, has that person met with Matthew and/or Peter?
Not yet, but as we move closer to that, I think next year... Not yet, but as we move closer to that, I think next year, she will, you know, be attending even this meeting and meet with management. But, but they do know her from the fact that she has been concurring, so they've been involved in, in the process. She has been involved in that.
She's been responsible for the SUNY audit, so...
Yes, she's also the current lead partner on SUNY, and she will be rotating off SUNY to, to take this over.
Step up.
Um, Slide Eight walks through the timing of risk assessment and testing, and Jason's actually gonna touch upon that in a slide or two. So we'll go to Slide Nine, which sets the scope of work. The scope of work includes us issuing an opinion on the financial statements of the university. We issue an opinion on just the senior colleges broken out from the rest of the university, and the purposes of that report is for the state of New York Capper. We also issue a report on the university's federal awards, and we also issue a management letter summarizing any internal control findings at the end of the audit. And lastly, before I turn it over to Jason, a slide on materiality. We consider materiality throughout the course of our entire engagement. There are different levels of materiality, but we do consider it when we plan our procedures and the scope and extent of those procedures. Okay, Jason?
Okay, everyone, I just want to say thank you and I'm very happy to be part of the engagement team this year. Just want to briefly go through our timeline for the audit for fiscal year 14. As we present to you today the audit plan, we have also started our interim fieldwork procedures, which involves the campus visits as well as the testing of design and implementation of internal controls. We will be back in early September through the end of October to perform our finals of standard work, perform any remaining audit procedures, and adopt and form our audit opinion at that time. In November, we will attend the audit committee meeting to present those audit results as well as the draft financial statements to be issued, and we will also present our SAS 114 required communications to those charged with governance, which would be the audit committee. Also, in December and through February of the next year, we'll finalize our A133 report as well as issue the management letter.
Have you had any concerns in the current audit or in the past couple of years about the universe, about our internal controls?
No, actually, in the, on the A133 side, which is the internal controls over federal awards, the last two years, you have had no findings. So that is fantastic news.
That's a good thing, yeah.
Yes.
And when you audit the senior colleges, do you audit their foundations?
No. We utilize the reports from those separate auditors.
Well, I, I am personally rather uncomfortable with the fact that the Central Board of Trustees seems to lack, as I, as it feels to me, as if we have no oversight over the activities of the college, various college foundations, which in some cases, you know, are, are substantial sources of funding. And, you know, I worry about a situation where those foundations are technically independent, because they do represent a significant portion of the university's operating budget resources. And I would like somebody to give me some advice or give the Fiscal Affairs Committee some advice, or the Audit Subcommittee, some advice about, about this situation, because I'm, I'm concerned that, that our, our fiduciary responsibility, it seems to me perhaps ought to include oversight of these foundations, and yet it does not as far as I'm, as far as I'm aware. So is that something that you... Does KPMG have experience with that kind of setup on, on other campuses? And do you have an overall view that you could provide about, about what our responsibility is, and, and not just in terms of our fiduciary responsibility as trustees, but our, our management of the university's resources to make sure that you're getting the best use out of the money we, we spend? I'd like some, if I, I feel that I would like some counsel and some advice.
Well, I, I guess in terms of what I see with respect to universities and foundations, I would say there's a 50-50 mix on whether or not we, we audit both. And it really does depend on, you know, how that foundation is structured with respect to the university. So there are other universities where we are also auditing the foundation, and it's because that foundation has separately engaged us to do so. So we're not being engaged by the university to conduct the foundation audit. We're actually being engaged by that foundation to conduct the audit, and we do do that.
Does the university get the foundation audit? Can the university?
Absolutely.
Have oversight?
And I would say that Miriam's group, they, they, they do provide oversight to the foundations auditors in the sense that now that, how they roll up into the university's fin, the university's financial statements, they're, they do need to, you know, have a cohesive approach to bringing that, that money on.
Well, Mary, do you think I'm wrong to have this oversight concern?
No, but I think your oversight concern is not on the audit and the data. I think it's in the relationship between, at least as I hear it, is the relationship of how the foundations choose to spend their resources on that university.
Well, it's partly audit, just in the sense I want to know that the foundations are managed, you know, financially well managed.
That, that...
But yes, my main concern is, is are they spending their money in, in a way that advances the interests of the university?
It's an accountability issue.
Yeah, it's an accountability.
From, from the audit, in review of their financial statements, we do have oversight. We do pick up their numbers. We are now mapping those into our actual general ledger in order to do the different consolidations of the discreetly presented units. We review their audited reports, and we make sure that they are employing auditors who we think have the skill set to do the audit of a not-for-profit foundation. But I don't know...
Well, maybe what I would propose, Chair Schmidt, is maybe when we do the, when we present our completed audited financial statements in the fall, then maybe at that meeting, we could spend a little time talking about the foundation audits and any issues that we may have come across.
It's also an issue that needs to be discussed in the context of governance as well.
Yes, accountability.
Because the foundations are independent entities with their own board of directors.
Right.
And they have been empowered to hire their own auditors. And because we roll up that into our audit, there is some substantial degree, although not complete review, of their work and, and the purity, if you will, efficacy and appropriateness of the audit. But I do think you raise a very important, for the board-level governance issue, as to who's really going to be responsible. CUNY appears to, in the dark reaches of history, reach the conclusion that the, that it was more advantageous to have the foundations as separate, separate entities. And if that's going to be changed, it's probably some good reasons why one would look at that. But I do think it would get to the governance of it as much as anything else.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the point you raise, and I, I was gonna look down to Rick to say, what is the governance apparatus that's in place? For me, at least, what's it, what's its history in addition to that? You referred to, interestingly, the funds in these foundations as university funds on the one hand and foundation funds on the other. I'm not sure whose funds they are. It'd be helpful to know that. Your interest in the management of those funds remains nevertheless. And I, I don't know, is there a, a history that ought to be shared with us, Rick, about this?
Well, a number of years ago, we formed a CUNY-wide task force relating to the foundations with some outside assistance. And we came up with a book on best practices, which we shared and monitored with respect to the foundations. They were all exceedingly cooperative and, and grateful for, for the effort. Among the results of that were memorandum of understanding between the foundations and the university on various issues. And so we, we have looked at this and, and at least at one point in time, felt comfortable with the results, but these things always bear looking at again from time to time. And we could provide you with the, the book on best practices, and I think we had a separate book on, on sort of financial matters, these are the, between the university and the foundations. And so why don't we provide members of the committee with those materials and, and talk about whether we think it's, it would be appropriate to have another look.
And also existing practices, if they don't mirror exactly what you're gonna suggest to us are best practices. I'm not sure what we're doing today or how we do it.
Dusting off some, some dust, as I recall, there were some campuses that were very much in compliance, and then there were some campuses that were very much not in compliance. And we, I don't recall us having a recent update on particularly those who were not in compliance, where they are today. So I think your suggestion of reviewing that is, is appropriate, because as I recall, there were a number that were not in compliance with the recommendations at all.
Okay, so we'll plan to do that in the fall. And as Vice Chancellor Schaefer offered up, we'll, we'll share those materials with you, and we'll continue the conversation.
The last remaining item is a brief discussion of the management letter.
And I had reviewed the comments back in February, March, when I was last here, and there were no new comments at the central office level. And there were an update of all of the previous comments at the campus visit, but nothing significant.
And again, the firm you said contract to is Watson Rice?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to welcome you to the CUNY team.
Okay, thank you very much. I'm a root grass, so...
Oh, good, good.
Welcome back.
You're well-prepared.
Okay, if there are no other, because...
Yes.
Okay, if there are no other items, and there are no other items for the Subcommittee on Audit?
Is this, is this your last meeting?
No, I still have this audit and one more audit, so take it rid of me that, that easily.
You'll see her for a while.
Okay.
So now we're going to the Subcommittee on Investments. First item of business is the approval of the minutes of the meeting on April 7. I'll move them. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments, changes? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. I now, we now need to go into executive session to be able to talk about some of our investment issues. Do we need a vote to that? We're in executive session. Okay, we're back in regular session. We have two items of business to go through. The first is a, a resolution to approve the short-term investment policy that was attached in the materials, and to create and approve the short-term investment pool contemplated therein. I'll move the motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. Any questions, comments? There being none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Before we go on to the next item, I want to congratulate Professor Martel for being elected Chair of the Faculty Senate. Well, I've never known anybody elected to something who didn't want the job, so I knew... Congratulations.
It's my pleasure to continue to serve this university.
And I actually believe the university is students and faculty as well as administration. The second item of business is an approval, not a full-fledged resolution, and that is based on discussions regarding emerging markets and emerging market managers. Our next meeting is in September. If we have to move quickly, we'll go to the emergency powers. It's just a recognition that that'll go to Vice Chancellor Sapienza, and at which point in time, we will talk to the committee individually by phone as to what direction we're going and v. the v. So do we need that approval, just an acknowledgement that that's happening? And do we, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. I'm all in favor of adjournment.
Move it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a great summer.